Good evening. I will call to meeting to order at this time. If you will, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing. Sorry. Pledge of allegiance, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll ask Councilman Barber to lead us in the invocation. And after the invocation, then we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray, Lord, I thank you so much for having this opportunity. We can come and we gather together and we do the business of the town of Smithfield. I pray, Lord, right now that you'd help us to do it in a way that we be productive for our citizens. We do the right things with the right mind. We thank you, Lord, for those opportunities that we have in the town of Smithfield. We thank you, Lord, for the growth that we've seen in the town. Help us, Lord, to manage it in the right way. Help us, Lord, to meet the needs of our citizens. And whatever we do, let it be done in a way that will be glorified in your name for us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, you have the agenda. There is one known addition to the agenda that should be at your places. Business item number two, consideration and request for approval to purchase two pickup trucks from Piedmont Trucks in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-four cents for parks and recreation. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, under special event, day of thanks, could we move that to business item number three? And probably wouldn't take about thirty seconds.
Which one was that, Councilman Liam?
Special under consent agenda, number three.
Okay. Yep. Do that. Okay, anything else? All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Same move, Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion and a second by Councilman Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to our first presentation this evening. Presentation on the Neuse River Trail Study. Stephen?
I'd just like to introduce Adrian O'Neill and Austin Cross from Johnson County Parks. They're going to make a brief presentation. And I just want to point out that there is a resolution of support for this study that you're being asked to consider.
All right.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, sir.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'll try to keep this brief. We are bringing to you tonight the Neuse River Trail Study. And this was done by McGillan Associates. In this study, they studied forty-eight routes for the Mountains to Sea Trail. As you might not know, the Mountains to Sea Trail has been around in an idea since the seventies. And Johnston County is one of the last places it needs to go through to be completed. And Johnston County is one of the hardest places to go through to be completed because of the development that's going on in the last couple of years. If we'd have done it thirty or forty years ago, it'd probably been a whole lot easier. But, you know, things happen. So going through our slides tonight, we'll get to the next one. We are introducing this plan to you and asking for your adoption of it. The first map on the right that you see are the possible trails that were studied. Forty-eight different sections, seventy-five different miles, and over twenty-five meetings were held to study these sections in the last six months to a year. It was funded by SPR grant from DOT. The county had about a seventy-five-hundred-dollar outlay on that. And the DOT paid the other, the rest of the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to get that study done. We did survey many of the residents of Johnston County. We had about six-hundred-and-sixty participants in the survey and over thirteen-hundred candid comments that came in, which if you know anything about surveys, when somebody has to actually write a comment, that means a lot. And we took a lot of time to look at those and study those. You want to move on to the next slide? In this area that we studied, all these pink squares represent different landowners. We did talk to a lot of those landowners. And we did get a lot of them that told us no, they didn't want the trail going through their property. But with that, with that, we found some willing landowners. And what we came up with was three different potential routes. And we have a low-hanging fruit route, which is something we think we can get completed in the next five to ten years. We have a pie-in-the-sky route, which is where we would like for it to be fifty years from now, for it to be a really highly marketed trail. Part of this study was going through and making plans for what it would look like on the ground, what it would look like from a distance looking forward. The separations from road and walkway, that's very important for Mountains to Sea Trail. And also, the Mountains to Sea Trail and the East Coast Greenway through this particular section will take the same path. So you're getting two trails for one. You're getting two state trails, because both of them are considered state trails by State Park System. And one of them is considered a national trail. East Coast Greenway goes from Maine all the way to Florida. The Mountains to Sea Trail obviously goes from the mountains of North Carolina to the coast. And these are some of those different typical cross-sections of trail. And we do have boardwalks that we'll have to put on there, obviously. Johnston County has some wet spots in it. This, these are routes studied, but this is the recommended routes. And like I said, there are really three different routes. And eventually, when we get to the end of everything we do on this trail program, these, we're probably going to have a spider web that uses these, some of all of these routes, not just one in particular. This is the preferred alignment. What you see on here right now, this is our pie-in-the-sky alignment. And probably, you know, I would say that fifty percent of this is doable quickly. The other fifty percent will take some time. The orange section is the Smithfield section, segment D. And that's what we'll be talking about now. These are our partners. And I won't go through all those, but we do have a great group of partners that are helping us out. And you'll see NC State Parks is in there as well. There's a big number, a big price tag for this trail. I will tell you the reason for that, and I hope it doesn't get that high. But the reason for that is that's worst-case scenario if we had to buy land at thirty-thousand dollars an acre. That's why this number seems astronomical. We, we're not asking for any money tonight. I want you to know that. We do, we have employed Austin Cross, who is our grants administrator for parks in Johnston County. And he's going to be searching out funds to help pay for the trail. There are many different funds that can assist in this. Looking at Parks Recreation Trust Fund, Land and Water Conservation Fund, and many other grant opportunities throughout the state and throughout the federal government. And then, these are the jurisdictional cost estimates. As you see, we have one worked out for each town. And the county is in the blue at the bottom, which is the highest cost. And one of the reasons it's the highest cost is because it does include one bridge crossing of the Neuse River. That, that one is one thing that we're probably not going to get a whole lot of discount on.
How much does that cost? Wow.
I want to say it's right at four million dollars.
Across the river?
Yeah. You got to think about it, though. We're building a bridge, much like a DOT bridge. I mean, it's got to be able to hold up bicycles, walkers, and, and emergency traffic in some respects that go across. And then also, one thing I like to remind everybody, and like I said, I was going to keep this short. Even when we get this trail built, and it will be built eventually, there will be maintenance costs, and we factored that into the plan, too. If you've looked at this plan, it is a substantial plan. It's got a lot of pages in it. And I just wanted to give you kind of the highlights tonight and then ask you if you had any questions that I could answer. And then also ask you to adopt the plan so that we can move forward. Adoption of the plan by the different towns and cities associated will give us a stronger standing when we start applying for grants and we start looking at matching funds and things like that. We do have some developers that have already given us a good indication that they're going to support it, one to the tune of a million dollars. So we are already raising funds for this, and we're already looking to the future to be able to get it moving.
Any questions, comments?
I will add that when, when we get a million dollars of funding like that, generally through our partners and our friends and the ability to leverage, we can turn it into three or four million.
So my question was, what's the, what's the, I see the tall cost of the different towns, the cost to the county. What's the cost, total cost? This is Johnson County. This is Johnson County, I'm assuming that's the county's cost, right? That's what the county's paying. Town's cost, Town of Clayton, Town of Smithfield, Johnston County, Town of Wilson Mills. So what's the total cost of the, of the estimate costs from the main line connector total? Add it all together?
Yeah, add it all together. And I will say, the reason I had that number right on top of my head is because it's a worst-case scenario.
Right.
And we're not going to get that high. And also, one other thing to remember is this is 2027 cost. That's projected prices for 2027. Hopefully, if we start before then, we're going to see that cost lowered. So don't, don't fixate on the costs on this page. Because we, during the last two years, with the price of things going up the way they did, the price of trails also went up. For about twenty years, we had a trail per mile cost at about a million dollars per mile. With the construction costs that happened over the last two or three years, that per mile cost went up to about two million. That's what the estimator's estimated, is two million dollars per mile. I don't think we're going to be at that. Because some of our material costs are coming back down. And hopefully, we won't have to buy all the land that's under this trail. Hopefully, we can get evidence for a lot of it and downright gifts for a lot of it. Because people are very interested in trails right now, and, and they do support trail programs throughout the state. That's one thing that during COVID was very strong. People found out that even when they couldn't do anything else, they could still get out on a trail. And they made use of many of our trails throughout the state. We saw the numbers go through the roof.
Mayor, I have a few questions. Sir, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Adrian O'Neill.
Mr. O'Neill, just a couple of observation. The question, I saw part of your presentation, you guys have done it for the county in the past. And there was discussion about, you know, the street route and the river route. Kind of where are y'all at with that?
We're, we're having some success with the river route. You know, we're, we're talking to several different towns, and we're talking to several different landowners that are along the river. And those talks are looking positive.
Have you presented this to all the towns?
We have talked to the recreation departments in each town and some of the administrators in each town. But we haven't done, you're, you're the first council meeting that we've broken.
Mr. O'Neill, what would be, obviously, you guys seek grant money and such as that. What would local contribution, do you think, based on other projects y'all have seen that you've done, comes from local funds?
That is something I'd have to check on. I don't want to tell you something that's not true, but I can check on that and get back to you.
And thank you. My concern with this, it's a fantastic project. Making it reality is very expensive, obviously. When I first was put on this council, we were going, the Greenway had been approved, that we currently have. And that was a rather controversial topic, but it's been well-received in the community, and it's a great resource that we have. However, I think that it's important that for the plan to be successful, you've got to have realistic numbers for maintenance. Our board has seen significant cost for maintenance along the riverwalk. That river pattern changes and washout, and we've had to close it several times just to rehab that. So, you know, it's nice to be next to the river, but I would encourage you guys, you know, the natural concept is great, but give yourself a buffer. Because that river changes. And we, right here in town, we've had to rehab those banks on many occasions. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but I'm sure I can tell you about it. But, you know, I like the concept. I'm concerned about the revenue that it's going to take to generate to do that. Because, you know, our Powell bill that we currently have that funds our road maintenance is way low. If we can get federal dollars to help, but we've got, when it comes to spending money, we have to prioritize. And the streets would have to be a priority over this concept. But, you know, obviously, planning is important. But I, this runs right near my neighborhood, the part that we have in Smithfield. And it's, it's well-used, and it's well-received. The other question that comes to mind is, would this be sidewalks or non-motorized vehicles? I'm sure that's your concept. And, and also, are you looking at concrete or asphalt?
The, some of the funding that is in place right now statewide is finish the trails project, things like that. There was about a hundred million dollars for parks in state budget last year. And I think approximately ten million dollars of that was earmarked for trails. Johnston County is one of the areas that is, is a hot point, hot target for that trail money because of the fact we've got these two state trails going through that aren't complete. And one of those, actually, both of those are natural surface trails at this time. Now, that doesn't mean that later on they can be improved.
But it's just not a finished surface.
Not necessarily.
Could be gravel, could be clay.
Could be gravel, could be screenings. It'll be a fixed surface, but not a, I won't call it a hardened surface. Also, to go back to your other concern, one of the new terms that we have really fallen back on in the trails industry is resiliency. Because we have seen those problems you're talking about during hurricanes and during strong storm events. And that's, when we designed this trail or when we started talking about where this trail was going to be routed, that was one of the things we really put a strong emphasis on to the designers or to the planners, is to make sure that we were doing something that was not necessarily right down on the river, where it's going to be washed out every time. Because as we've seen with other trails, there, you know, if your trail's going to stay underwater for three months out of the year, then it's not very effective. So we, we kind of took that into account. And you won't, most likely, won't see a trail that's right down on the river. Now, you may have stream crossings or gully crossings that do get affected at times. But, you know, you can't avoid every single one of those.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay, so I'm trying to understand the map. If I look at page one forty, if I looked on page of this study, page one forty-four, I saw the, it shows the, the route segment by jurisdiction. So it shows, I'm assuming, the Smithfield segment that connects to the Greenway.
Correct.
And it looks like it comes down. Then I looked on page one forty-two, and it kind of explodes it out a little more, to give you a little better view of it, if I'm not mistaken. And so it looks like to me, my question is, is where it says, where the, it looks like where it turns in the, this place right here. You see what I'm talking about? This place where it kind of curves around. Is that going down Kelly Drive? Is that what it's doing? The sidewalks there, is that what the intent is?
That is.
So really, you've already got the sidewalks built from Kelly Drive all the way to the community park, because there's current sidewalks already. There may need to be a walkway across the road.
Correct.
But other than that, the, the infrastructure's already completed. Is that not correct?
That is correct for the most part. Now, I will say that some sidewalks don't meet the width required for the East Coast Greenway. Most sidewalks meet the width requirement for the Mountains to Sea Trail. But the East Coast Greenway, they require a little bit wider to be dedicated to the East Coast Greenway because of the fact, they, they were thinking about that maintenance, and they know that grass is going to grow up on the edges. And they said, okay, we want to indicate a twelve-foot-wide path so that when you lose a foot on either side, you've still got a ten-foot-wide path, which is their target. So some of those may, I haven't looked at those, you know, measured them, but some of those may not be quite the width available. And also, for a state trail, you do have to have certain separations. Now, curbing gutter counts as that. Actual physical divider counts in some places. So it's not saying that a walkway can't be right on the road, but you have to make sure it hits all of those requirements.
Well, they're pretty nice sidewalks there building outside.
Oh, yeah.
I wish they were in West Smithfield, but that's another story, another day. So I'm just saying, so it looks like to me, we've already got, you don't know what the, what, because you just said you don't know. You don't know what modifications or anything would have to be done for that. But it looks like to me, we already have in the segment for Smithfield, just saying, segment for Smithfield, at least for one of them, we've got a good chunk of it already completed. And of course, we also have our, our Greenway already also that's part of that, correct?
Very correct.
So we have a large portion of that already completed. I mean, for the most part, again, you wouldn't know what, you're not far enough along, as you said, to know what, you know, modifications might need to be made to it. But I'm assuming you guys just use that as a, why not? It's already there, right?
Exactly.
I mean, that's what I would do. And I don't know that many people's using it right now, right? Because we haven't got a lot of development over there yet, so it works out.
Well, you're, you're exactly right. We use those as, as, if, if it's not going to be the final product, it can be a temporary product to catch from one place to another and make that connection until a, you know, pathway at least through the woods can be built or can be acquired.
So then my understanding is, let me just, just follow my thought a minute. So then we go to Buffalo Road here, right? And it's, looks like to me, it goes about to where the, somewhere over there near where the church is at. That's for sale.
I have.
Yep. Is that correct? And then it shuts over to the river.
That, that is correct.
I know how the church is already for sale, by the way.
That's all state land above it.
You what?
That's all state land above it.
All that's state land above it?
Yes, it is. Pretty wet state land, but it's state.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right.
Actually, State Land and Triangle Trails Initiative has part of that property, too. So, and we're already working with a landowner across seventy through Triangle Land Conservancy. So, you know, it's not just us working on it, it's also our partners. We, we have a great partner in Triangle Land Conservancy, and they're doing a great job of expand, expanding some of the funds we give them into even more funds and even more match money.
So now, one other question I have is the, so the road, the stuff, the road, the stuff that runs along Buffalo Road, that's private property on the side of the road, correct?
Yes, it is.
And so the question is, what if you have, because I'm understanding you can't use eminent domain to do any types of sidewalks?
You cannot use eminent domain on any trail that is going to be dedicated as a state trail. So if we want it to actually be a state trail, Mountains to Sea Trail, or East Coast Greenway, it cannot be taken through eminent domain. And we don't want to take it through eminent domain anyway. Because parks tries to stay neutral, and that's the best way to stay neutral is not to, not to get sideways.
So until you purchase, until you have the money to purchase land, you don't know if you can go that way. You might have to go an entirely different way, because the landowner may not want to do it.
That's correct.
And now, some people on that road down there, I don't know if they want to donate land or not, so, just saying.
And we've already had indications from a couple of them on one side that they didn't want to do anything. But we've had indications on the other side that there was some landowners.
Okay. I just, so we're, we're way, I guess my question is, we're way early still, even now, because we don't know the facts, exactly. I mean, we know, you have a plan, but until you have money, I guess, you can't really settle the deal.
We do a lot of bunny hopping. For example, in Alamance County, one of the things they did was they build a section, and then they use that section to match the next session, section for funding. And you kind of have to do the same thing when you're purchasing land. You kind of have to know where one trail's going to end, and then you start working on the next piece. You have an idea that's going to go through there. But, you know, just like anything else, no, it's a sure thing to get it complete.
Mr. O'Neill, real quick, I noticed it crosses the railroad in Wilson's Mills, comes down the seventy corridor, crosses back over the railroad to catch a bridge, and then crosses back. I'm just curious, I know that's just a concept, but is there a reason?
That's one of the areas that's already really changed a lot, and we'll be, we'll be looking at a little closer. That's one of the areas that we get a little closer to the river, and we have some higher property in there.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
So what would the, what would the cost, the estimate, I mean, you asked us to, you know, approve the plan. So what, I guess my question is, what is the obligation from the town of Smithfield if we, I guess, agree to the plan?
One of the primary things this does for us, like I said, it does help us with grants, but it also helps us through the Complete Streets Program with DOT. Because if we've got this plan and we've got it approved, and DOT does come through with a road or a road improvement, then they have to look at these plans that have been adopted. And a lot of times, they will build out the plan that's been adopted. So that's one reason we want to get a plan. And it's not saying that this plan can't change over time. We want it to be organic, because it is a trail, and we are going to, we know that it's probably not going to go exactly where we've got it on the map, because this is a thirty-thousand-foot loop. But we want to have something in place. So if we do have DOT come in with a slug of money that we can take advantage of.
So I guess, I'm sorry, I may rephrase my question again, then. So my question was, well, if we approve this, if we, you know, do what you want us to do, what is the obligation? Is there any financial obligation at this point? We understand the plan, but are we committing ourselves to any financial obligation in the future? Thank you, sir.
No, I would say no, this is a plan and a feasibility study, it's not a construction study. So this is estimates on what it may cost. It's not saying that we need that much money. And as I said, you know, we'll take any donations for trails that you're willing to give, but we, we're going to work on funding through grants and other sources as much as possible.
Mayor, I have one other question, I do apologize.
No problem.
Curious, is, and this may be not something you can answer, sir, but it's something we probably should look into. Is tourism funding allowed to be used for projects such as this? Mayor, do you have any idea? Mr. Scott, would you know?
It can be.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It sure can. Matter of fact, we have used some tourism money in repairing the trail that we have.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Do you have any?
No, I appreciate your time tonight, and y'all asked very good questions. I appreciate that, because I'm going to be going to three other towns, and I'm sure they'll have some of the same question. You might want to look at the next one, because I'm sure I'll beef up on those questions y'all asked.
Gotcha.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion to adopt the resolution. Number seven thirteen.
Make a motion, we adopt resolution number seven thirteen. Twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-two, is that part of the resolution?
I have a motion to adopt resolution number seven thirteen in support of the Neuse River Trail Study. I have a second. Councilman Rabel, I believe. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Your motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, very nice job. Thank you. Okay. Move on now to our public hearings. We just have one public hearing this evening? Our first public hearing is ZA dash twenty-two dash zero-three for the town of Smithfield. The applicant is requesting amendment to Unified Development Ordinance, Article Eight, Section Eight, thirteen dot six, to allow for a maximum building height of one hundred feet when located within a B-three zoning district and within six-hundred-and-sixty feet of Interstate Highway ninety-five, and striking the requirement for a special use permit when a building exceeds forty feet in height and located within a commercial or industrial zoning district. This time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you. So this is an amendment being requested by staff at the direction of the planning board. The planning board and the council, from time to time, receive a special use permit request to exceed the forty-foot height. receive a special use permit request to exceed the 40-foot height. Typically, it's been for hotels in the B3 district along the I-95 corridor. The planning board recognize the fact that they get these requests, and there really are never any conditions applied to them. It's become sort of routine. So they don't, do not want to see special use permit requests coming to them for that purpose anymore. So we crafted this, um, basically tailoring it to the way our, our high-rise signs are administered. We allow high-rise signs within the same, uh, six, was it 600 feet from the I-95 corridor? And that's the only place we allow them, within, within that, that district. And so we're mimicking that, allowing, um, within the B3, only within the B3, within 660 feet of I-95, allowing, um, buildings up to 80 feet in height. I'm sorry.
Hundred.
Hundred feet in height, um, by right. Just in that area. Anywhere else, no, anywhere else, the other commercial districts, which that clause used to pertain to, um, now would only be allowed through a conditional zoning. Since we have the conditional zoning in place, that gives the council even more control over, um, how it would look, how it would impact setbacks and other dimensional standards. And it's probably even a better way to address, um, essentially, requests for height in some other more sensitive locations. We don't feel the I-95 corridor is as sensitive to height as it might be somewhere, um, in proximity to single-family homes or, um, other low-rise buildings nearby. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we tried to do, um, satisfying the planning board's request. Um, as you know, we already allow by right 80-foot height in the light industrial district. So again, if, if we get a request for height in the O-N-I district, a B2, or any other district, um, it could only be done through conditional zoning. So, um, I probably can skip these slides unless you have specific questions. Any questions?
Any questions for the planning director at this time?
The, uh, the last two, or the last hotel that we approved, um, the height was consistent with the prior. What was the height on that hotel?
I think it was around 90 feet.
Around 90?
Yeah. I recall it was 90.
The Hampton Inn?
Uh, no, there's another one adjacent to the Hampton Inn that's proposed.
Or just approved.
Yeah.
True hotel, whatever.
But they're all within, you know, five, eight, 10 feet from each other in height.
Any other questions? Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward. Not seeing any. Then no further questions. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to move to approve zoning text amendment ZA 22 dash 03, find the amendment consistent with town of Smithfield Comprehensive Growth Management Plan and other adopted plans.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to citizens' comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward. Not seeing anyone. We'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, before you move off that, I do have, um, one topic I would like to bring up. The residents weren't able to be here this evening. I received a communication I'd like to share with the, the police department. But, uh, pretty much what it is, is, uh, some of the citizens in the North Second Street corridor are observing high rate of speed, um, primarily, um, early morning hours, um, even concerned of other traffic that's going fast. And we really want to have a, a more detailed conversation about how to mitigate that. But, um, I, I would just like to bring it to the public's attention and ask the police chief, uh, if he could put some, uh,
Excuse me.
Some of your tools over there to help, uh, with this problem. And I'll be glad to speak with him one-on-one a little more, but, um, loud and noisy vehicles early in the morning, and it's been very disruptive. Just wanted to pass that along from some of the residents in the North Smithfield area.
Did you get that? Gentlemen? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as amended, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to our business items. Our first business item is consideration and request for approval of contracts for the Eva Innes Splash Pad and Trail. Stephen?
You? All right, so this is a request for approval of two contracts. One is a contract with JP Edwards for a little over $400,000 for the trail portion of the project. And then there's a contract with Carolina Recreation and Design for the Splash Pad expansion in the amount of about $130,000. Um, just as a reminder, the town received $535,000 from the state for construction of this, um, project. Staff has been working with various stakeholders along the way. We discovered that there are Duke power easements. We're encroaching on JCC property slightly. We're on the school board property slightly. Um, we're encroaching in a buffer. They considered the college pond, or the pond at the college there, as a protected water. So we're still working through that issue. And of course, we have erosion control we have to deal with. So just when we think about ready to go, you know, we have another little hurdle to jump through, and we've been, um, ticking those off one by one. So I believe construction would be starting very soon. To, uh, work on the timeline, JP Edwards was able to break the project into two for erosion control, so he can get started on the, um, non-pond area while he works through the issues with environmental for the buffer, which should be like the, the second phase of the project. So when RFQ was prepared, prepared early on, JP Edwards and Carolina Recreation Design are the selected contractors for the project. Just as a reminder, this is a concept sketch that I did early on for the project. Um, it's changed a little bit from this. You can see it involves the Splash Pad property with a parking lot and a trail around the pond. Um, we don't have enough funds for the connections to, the two northern connections into the neighborhood, um, at this time. One is a JCC property, and another one's on the school board property. It's not to say that that couldn't happen in the future. And then also, there's a trail loop around Smith Collins Park that connects across the road to the college pond. That's just an image of the expansion for the Splash Pad. So the contracts I'm asking the council to approve tonight exceed the projected budget by $2,318.75. However, within the JP Edwards scope of work includes the piping of the ditch on Amel K. Drive. If you recall, several months back, kids were playing in the ditch, and that is water that comes off. The Splash Pad runs into the ditch before it leaves the area, and that's a health, uh, concern. Um, so we, we had approached JP Edwards about giving us a separate number for that ditch, and that's, he, he just kind of baked it into the numbers. I think it came to, uh, um, $21,000 add-on. So in a sense, we're getting a $21,000 add-on for that ditch. But that's all being paid for, by the state, except for the, uh, $2,318 of it. If that makes sense. Staff is recommending the town council approve the contract for services. And, uh, there's a recommended motion here. We're not asking for a budget amendment at this time. Um, that can follow later as, if there's any changes to the contract, any savings, whatever, as the project develops. Any questions?
I have one question, though. The pond across from the community college, who owns that property?
The town owns most of it. We encroach on, um, on JP, sorry, on the JCC property. And, uh, I think the pointer's over here. We're encroaching a, a JCC property right there. And we're approaching a school district property right there. Otherwise, it's all town of Smithfield.
Are they in support of the project?
They are. I presented to the Board of Trustees, and I got a, an email from the school board saying it's okay.
Mayor, I have a few questions about this project. Um, obviously, uh, this is a huge blessing to Smithfield, the way that we received the money that the staff had requested, and knowing it was a, a concept that was going to become reality. You know, over there, um, in the park, uh, in East Smithfield, the back portion of that ball field where the trail is planned to be routed is, gets very wet at times. Will this help improve that? Or have y'all had any discussion or site, as far as a site review, that would help this with adding the trail? Or do you know? You may not.
I, I do not know. I know Paul Emmler has been working with JP Edwards on some of the logistics. And Paul did acknowledge that it's pretty wet. They're going to try to avoid the wettest areas. Um, but I don't know. It may be impacted sometimes when it's really wet. But I don't know if it's going to improve the drainage. I can't, I can't say.
Well, I certainly know if you put equipment in there, it could make it a lot worse if we didn't address it. Um, and the other question, what surface are we looking at for the trail base? Just like we talked about earlier.
Uh, it's going to be concrete.
Okay. So it will be like a sidewalk surface?
Eight foot wide.
Eight foot.
Any other questions? Glad to see that we are addressing the, the ditch there on that. And hopefully that, the drainage and so forth is it. I think that'll definitely make improvements to the existing pad, and hopefully overall as well, definitely.
One quick question. Would there be access, like, from JCC across the road to there, to the pond area?
From the college? There will not be any formal crossing. DOT would not allow it.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, people will park there and, and walk across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And the college was very interested in this trail. They were really happy to see it. So I wouldn't even know if they don't connect to it in the future.
Would there be any thing to deter people from walking across the street and not, instead?
No, in fact, in fact, where the trail comes real close to the, the road.
Yeah.
We're actually going to be in DOT right of way and had to get approval for that. And we're actually, actually going to have to build a little bit of curbing, maybe about 100 feet of curbing, to protect the pedestrians from traffic.
You know, they have overflow parking there now. It may not be legal, but, um, I can't see why they wouldn't consider some type of formal cross, crossing there.
DOT will not allow mid-block.
Understood.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to echo pretty much what you said about the ditch. Um, there was plenty of times last summer, uh, whenever that ditch got full of water, I mean, them kids were, they wouldn't go to the Splash Pad. They jumping in the water. And I mean, it's right there, right by the road. I mean, it's, luckily, they didn't get hurt. But then again, on some instances, people with their pets are coming through, and their pets are doing whatever in that ditch. And, but, um, so I'm glad we are going to, you know, take care of that part, because, I mean, kids are kids, but still, um, it is a major health risk. So I'm glad that's been addressed.
Put all that fancy equipment out there, and they still want to just play in the mud puddle rather than. Yep. I hear you. Any other comments?
All right.
So this is going to double the size of the Splash Pad, is that correct?
Uh, I don't know the, yes. Gary's nodding yes.
Any other comments, thoughts?
Mayor, I'm just concerned, but what could be, uh, will we get a more, uh, final plan? This is kind of a sketch. Is there, will there be a design? Is this just like design build or?
I do have, I do have a plan that shows the GPS coordinates around the pond. And there's going to be a slight change to that, because they're really trying to avoid the, um, the buffer encroachment. So they're going to push it a little further away where they can. But I do have a, it's kind of a, it's not a very presentable drawing. Um, and I have that for the college pound, pond portion. And, um, I think they also have one for the Smith Collins side. But, um, it's a design-build project, so it saved us a lot of money just saying, can you build this? And then they just went out with a surveyor and mapped it out, and then GPS those flags, and that's our design.
All right. You have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we approved the two contracts with JP Edwards and Carolina Recreation and Design for the Eva Innes Expansion and Smith Collins Park Trail.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, by Councilman Rabel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, one quick question for staff and Gary. You may, what, what is our timeline for completion? Is that an idea already established?
They want to get going this fall. Um, Gary, do you know when?
Okay, thank you.
So that just, I just thought of one more question. I know we're done with this. But Gary, just, we'll, I know we had some issues in the past with, with the pumps, and I'm not exactly sure what it was with the, with the existing.
Wiring issue.
Wiring issue, yeah. Has that been corrected? Or will this be factored into this, this project as well? Okay. Done, okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. And if anything comes up, uh, for free, feel free to call me. It's going to be a, an interesting project to watch it go, go in place. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the next business item, which is consideration and request for approval to purchase two pickup trucks for, run Piedmont trucks in the amount of $89,697.84 for the Parks and Recreation Department. Gary?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we're coming for you tonight to ask approval to purchase two F-250 crew cab pickup trucks for the Parks and Recreation Department. Um, we had two trucks in the budget in the 21-22 year, um, based on numbers that we were given during the budgeting process of that fiscal year. Um, of course, during that time of COVID and supply chain issues, not only could we not get more updated quotes, we couldn't even get trucks. We couldn't even find trucks. So, um, we've been working on, we encumbered that money into this year's budget, and we have been working on finding trucks to, um, to replace the two that we're trying to replace. It's a '03 model and a '06 model that we're trying to replace. Um, we used the, um, state contract Chevrolet. We, they, they've already closed their ordering bank for government vehicles, so we can't even get a Chevrolet truck. The, um, so we got quotes from Piedmont Ford and Adleton Dodge, who are the state contract holders for those, those types of vehicles. Um, the Ford trucks came in at 44.
The Ford trucks came in at 44, 848, and the Dodge 250s came in at 51, 679. So you see the total for the two Fords are 89,697. Now, we had 65,000 originally budgeted for those two trucks. In this year's budget, we have freed up 15 additional thousand dollars in the capital line item. We had a bridge in there behind Field Four that we were going to have to rebuild. Shook Construction, who was doing the water plant, actually rebuilt that bridge for us as a community project. When they do big projects like that, they came in and do community projects. They contacted us and we thought that would be a, a good project for them to do with the resources that they had. So that freed up $15,000 in the budget that we had budgeted for that bridge that we won't have to spend for that purpose. So if we use that 15,000 from the bridge, that'll leave us short $9,697 that we'll need to take out of general contingency to, to order the, the two trucks. With that being said, the ordering bank for the Fords opens up on November the 14th. So that's why we're coming for you tonight. So we'll be ready to do that. There's no guarantee that we will even get the trucks. Ford is going to allocate X amount of trucks to the state and they'll be allocated to government agencies. So I'll know by the end of this week or no later than the end of next week, before the ordering bank opens, if we're even allocated trucks. So if we are allocated trucks, we'll, we'll order them. It'll probably be April or May before we can, can get them in. So we're requesting the approval to buy these vehicles or attempt to buy these vehicles.
Any questions?
We have a couple of questions. Gary, thank you for your presentation. Does the Ford meet your needs based on the Dodge?
Yes, there, we, we need a, either a F-250, Ram 250, or 2500 to pull the trailers, tractors, lawnmowers that we pull around town. And so that, and that's what we're driving now is F-250s. And they've, they've served us really well, so.
I think it's a great plan. I'll see how you present it. My question is, wonder, was local not interested?
We actually got, because they're not part of the government contract, they can't, they can give you government pricing, but they couldn't even give us. I got one on the Chevrolet of $48,000. There would be some bid assistance, but they couldn't tell me how much it would be until we ordered the trucks. And so I can't come in with a number. You know, they may give us a thousand dollars in bid assistance and there'd be $57,000. No guarantee that they could get the trucks either, so.
It's a, it's a strange market.
It's crazy to try to find vehicles.
I have one other question, Mayor, and I'm done with this. Is the reserve, excuse me, the shortfall of 9,697? Is the contingency, is that where we were looking at that, Mr. Scott? And, or could we use a reserve fund? We do have some funds there that, in fact, I don't know if it would need to be necessary to talk about the, well, this is equipment. So those allocated funds that were for parks, stuff, that, that's not something we should talk about. This needs to be contingency.
That, that's correct. And if you approve this expenditure out of contingency, you'll still have about 232,000 left in there, so.
So we're not acquiring any rolling stock deal at all?
No.
And Gary, you will, the other two vehicles probably go to our auction. The other two vehicles will go to the auction.
Yeah, they'll go into, once we get the new vehicles, we'll put the other ones on Gov. Deals.
Would you consider one for air? Or do you think you need that?
No.
You wouldn't need that?
Not those two.
Yeah, well, I would think so. I understand, but you'll still have to ask. The other money, if you weren't able to, it'd be put back in the contingency anyway, so. I know we've done that with Lawrence. He's kept a spare one, so I didn't know. So. Well, I know when those other two trucks were purchased, it's been a long time. They're in desperate need.
O3 been here about as long as I have.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Gary at this time? Not, oh, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the two requested F-250s at the bid and cover the, the shortfall of funding from 9,697 from contingency funds and general fund. And just note that these, these were budgeted allocations planned.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of vehicles. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right. We will move on now to the business item that was added from the consent agenda. Business item number three, Women on the Move Day of Thanks. Councilman Lee, do you want to?
Just basically, this was event that pretty much was started last year at Smith Collins Park. Coming up again this weekend. And it was wonderful last year. A young lady and her organization gave away a lot of food. I mean, everything was free. They gave away some clothes, free clothes and everything. She's wanting to kind of do it yearly. So if we could just change it to the first Saturday in November, she didn't really know the process. And I told her, no, you didn't have to come out here every year and, and do this. And, you know, and if it pleases the council and the mayor. I just wanted to know, can we just turn this to a yearly event, the first Saturday in November?
I think we've done that in, in other, other events. Is that correct?
Yeah, we try to not do it on the very first year, which this one isn't, just because we want to see how it goes. But this would be the second year, so that would meet our criteria.
Got it. Okay.
Got a motion, Councilman Lee?
Please.
Second.
A motion and a second to, to make this an annual event. Does not require coming back to the council for the first Saturday in November. Is that correct, Councilman Lee? That's it. Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Yep, thank you. And we'll move on to council members' comments. Any comments from the council?
I have a couple. First of all, I'd like to say appreciation to the, to the guys working on our sewer, on our. Our fire hydrant was leaking. A neighbor said, hey, I'm gonna tell you, my fire hydrant leaking over here, when it was leaking. I called the fire department. They went and looked at it. Yep, it's leaking. They got onto the public works people and they whooped up on it, fixed it. Took them longer than was anticipated. He was a little more involved in it, but they jumped on it and everything is, had few people complaining because the water was off, you know? People always complain about something, don't they? But we appreciate that. Second thing is, I want to appreciate to the Parks Recreation people for drone, the drone flying event that we had in October. It was outstanding. We had a good number of people show up. Matter of fact, we're having, we are having a, a racing event on November the, you remember?
32nd.
November the, yes, 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 Saturday, November the 19th, I think it is. Yep, right? Yeah, so that if anybody's interested, this doesn't cost you anything to go see it. They got, they're going to be having a racing event there on November the 19th. Where we had, when we have the drone flying, we have a good number of people tell us that they use the field, professionals that actually come out and practice on the field. So it's very, it's really something great to do. So I fly Roger's house. So he appreciates that.
I do it one more time, the only way I have.
You're not going to approve this as an annual event?
Well, they can, but, well, it is an annual, well done.
Picking up my house, they won't like that so much.
Drone flying is an annual event, so. But the, the other thing is, we want to thank, there's people in our district, District Four, they need to look to see about their voting. Their voting location has changed. I know mine is now over at the middle school instead of the, the church. So I'm assuming most of us in that neighborhood are. So people need to make sure they pay attention where they, if they're not, if they haven't already voted, which I did. But if you vote on that day, you need to know where your voting's at. So that's important. If you go to the church, you're probably sitting there and wait and no one will show up. You need to see what your card, should have got a card in the mail from the, the voting election board telling you where to vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Mayor, I have a couple of comments real quick. They'll be very brief. The first comment I'd like to make, just reminder that the council, this is such a very important thing. Our fire department is going through ISO inspection this month, I believe I'm correct. The latter part of the month. And that is a really big deal for this town and how we score and how our insurance ratings are affected. I just want to encourage everybody to be thinking about that as they move forward. A second comment I have is, I can't go without calling on Keith Powell tonight. He's informed us unofficially, this is his last meeting. I think, I still think he's come back for at least one more. But I just want to tell him publicly, thank you for the job that he's done throughout the years. He's been a pillar for Smithfield in every role that he's served in the police department. And he's truly helped make Smithfield better, lots of the challenges and, and things that we've had. And, you know, there's been a lot of things. But I just wanted to publicly thank him for his service and dedication. And the last thing, very brief, the downtown development, I believe, Sarah, y'all have the Touch a Truck event coming up. Yeah, it's similar concept. That's been a very successful thing. And just wanted to make sure council knows about that. And the Juniors Women League, correct? So, but it's, draws a lot of people to town, helps our local businesses. And it's, it's a fine event. I hope the weather's pretty and that goes successful. But that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a few things, if you don't mind. Congratulations to Smithfield Summer High School's football team, finishing nine and one their regular season. They're going to the playoffs starting Friday at home. That's probably the, either equal, either ties or either the best season in school's history. I think in 85, we may have been nine and one or nine and oh or something. Ninety-seven you were, okay. I know 85 we were, ninety-seven, but, but great job to, to that, that whole group of kids. If you've not seen them play, they all go hard at it. Their attitudes are good. It's, the culture's changed a great deal and it's good to see. Congratulations to New Charter on the great volleyball season. Unfortunately, it come to an end this past Saturday. They did make the Elite Eight. So two years earlier, they made the state finals or in the final eight of the state, which is pretty remarkable. So good job, those student athletes. And a big kudos to Councilman Lee. His girls basketball, Purdue McClayton High was invited to the Holiday Invitational, formerly Holiday Invitational. Is it the John Wall Invitational now, Councilman? I know that when I was a kid, that was the, the tournaments of all tournaments. I mean, all the nation's best came. And to be invited, you had to be doing something right. So congratulations to our very own Councilman Lee and wish you best luck in the Holiday, I still call it Holiday Invitational. So good luck. And Keith, thank you. You can come to the house November 19th. I say, like, November 32nd. That's what I was thinking.
All right. Anyone else?
Just real quick, I was going to mention about the Triple S football team, but Roger, I've been a graduate, you graduated before I did, so defer to that. But no, it is going to be a exciting time this Friday night. They're going to be hosting first round of the playoffs, so hopefully everybody can make it out. Then to Chief Powell, I definitely like to publicly thank you for all that you've done. You know, even over in East Smithfield and some of the tough streets, the tough residents and everything. You still one of the ones that can go knock on any door, talk to any of the residents. And pretty much every time I text or call, I mean, you have somebody jump right on it. So I definitely like to think, thank you publicly for all that you've done. Even just dropping the groceries off at my parents' house. I mean, just all what you've done. And it, it really means a lot. But I was just looking at the statement here. It says, Chief Powell is retiring from his position on November 30th. It has 2023, not 2022, so. I guess we got just one other year, but I don't know if this, I don't know if it's a typo or what, but we're going to go by this right here. But no, anyway, I'd just like to thank you for all what you've done. You've really, I mean, you led by example. I mean, you, you really have. I mean, just again, coming into a tough section in East Smithfield. I mean, you've always been there. You talk about community policing. I mean, you are community policing because that community, you know, we definitely know who you are. So thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, again, Chief, before you step out, he's making sure we're all safe. Thank you. Still doing your job, I see. So, so yeah, I was, definitely want to thank you for your 30 years of service to the town of Smithfield. Just can't, this day and time, that's a bit unusual, especially in the role that you've served. And certainly want to thank you for everything you've done, your professionalism, your, your ability, like Councilman Lee mentioned, to, to actively engage in community policing. And it's not just in East Smithfield. It's, 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 it's in all areas, right? Anytime that I had a citizen complaint or, or anything, or speeding or, or loud music going, I've gotten the same, the same request as Councilman Scott did on North Second from Billy Wellens and Dr. Booker, to be exact. So just FYI, I'm not exactly sure what we're supposed to do about the, the loud vehicles, but that's been the loudest request that I got. So Chief Grady said, maybe you can, I mean, Captain Grady, maybe you can assist with, with, with that as well. So, but again, I just can't express enough the, the thank you for, for, for everything that you've done and the professionalism that you've shown. The leader that you've been to the other officers. And it's just, it's been, been, been good having you. And I hope they, hopefully that you will have a chance to relax a little bit and not be on the phone at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning texting me and so forth, telling me what's going on. And hopefully you'll be able to, to enjoy your retirement, so I'm sure. So, so thank you very much. Speaking of Smithfield, I also want to echo that as well. I did want to just ask and challenge or request that as the team travel, makes it to the, the first playoff, they're, they are asking for some donations to help feed the team. They, I think Golden Corral actually provides a meal at a discounted rate before their games. And there's a little initiative to try to collect some money. It's about, I can't, don't quote me, but 250, $280 per meal. And they're looking for some donations. They were, been able to do fairly well throughout the season. And now that they're extending it, they are asking for some donations. So if you're so inclined and, and see fit, you can just contact the school and I'm sure they can, I can't.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. They, they did make that request. There was a Facebook thing going around, so they, they, they made that request.
So they did, so they got it?
At least for this week, so hopefully they win and we'll do it again next week.
Hopefully after this win, Friday night, you know, then, you know, there, there'll be some availability for some additional funds that may be needed. So just keep that in mind as well. But, but again, outstanding record. And just the coach and the staff over there just seems to be doing a fantastic job. And I certainly hope that this community will continue to support them. I saw that, you know, it seemed like attendance was up at the games towards the, the end of the year. And I know the mayor of Selma and myself attended a couple together. And of course, I've seen Councilman Lee and Councilman Wood there as well and some of the others, right? But just what that does, I mentioned this last year, when I think we brought the New Charter School girls here who made it to the, to the finals in the state last year. Just what that means for, for a community, right? Everybody thinks it's just high school athletics. But just, just building up the community and getting behind our schools and being able to support them and showing our student athletes. If you're, you know, what they learned there, obviously that coach has done something right and is teaching those individuals on that football team the right things to do. And it's proven on the field and I'm sure it will be proven also off, off the field. So outstanding job there. And yeah, the New Charter School, they went 23 and four this year, 10 and oh in the conference, but lost out in the Elite Eight game last week. So their last Saturday, this past week, Saturday. So also, I did want to say a public thanks to Mr. Scott and, and others, town staff and county staff. Saturday morning, woke up trying to get ready to go to church and didn't have any water out in my, my neighborhood. And, and staff might jump right on that. And within just an hour or so, maybe two hours, they were able to identify the, the issue down Brogdon Road, I believe it was. Near Brogdon Road anyway, and had the water back on within about an hour, hour and a half's time period. So just an outstanding job there. So I want to thank you, sir, for, for getting on that on a, on a Sunday morning. So want to thank you, sir, for, for getting on that on a, on a Sunday morning. So that is all that I have. Turn it over to you for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, before he speaks, can I make one suggestion? And I do apologize for being out of order on this. I, I just want to make a note, I was, failed to be here at last meeting because of my work schedule. But I think it's important that we enter in discussion to discuss the manager's salary. That needs to be discussed as a review. And I feel like that if the board feels appropriate, we should, because we won't meet before this happens again, put some money for that football team, for their meal as it comes up. And I think it'd be appropriate if we set aside five hundred dollars. I'll put that in a motion to give the manager the authority to pick up the tab on that. And that can come from the non-department. And I'll let this, or we can say contingency, but I think that's important.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's, sounds like a, a good idea, definitely.
I'll put that in a motion for discussion.
All right, so I have a, a motion to the council to, or town to provide five hundred dollars towards the meals. Up to, up to five hundred dollars, I will say. Is that correct, Travis?
I think I understood that they've met their goal, but if they move forward, they'll need that.
That's, that's correct.
And that will give the manager the authority to handle that for them.
Yep.
I'll second that.
I have a, a motion and a second. All in favor? You opposed? All right. And then just while I have the floor, since it is Smithfield Selma, if my, my counterpart, if the mayor of Selma is listening, I'll, I'll contact him tomorrow. Or Councilman Lee, do you mind texting him right now? Tell him that I'm, I'm, I'm making a challenge to him to see if the town of Selma will also make a donation to Smithfield Selma as well. So Councilman Lee, if you'll take care of that, I, I will, I won't have to text Byron after, after this meeting. So, but I'll, I'll officially make that challenge to, to the mayor of Selma as well. Thank you, Councilman Scott. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple of things very quickly. There's been so much said about Chief Powell and his dedication to the police department that doesn't leave a lot yet to be said. Man, thirty years, it just goes by way too fast, doesn't it, for this job? Anyway, Chief Powell does have a retirement party that is scheduled for his last day of work, November thirtieth. It is being, going to be held here in the council chambers. It'll start at two o'clock in the afternoon and run till about five, drop in, drop out. And it is open to all the public, so please spread that around. And anyone who wants to come in and share a story or a tale, please do that. I'm sure the chief will appreciate it. As we move forward into the holiday season in December, I want to make sure everyone's aware that on December first, we have our Christmas tree lighting. Opens at six o'clock downtown and the lighting is at seven. On the third, we have our Grinch Run, Annual Grinch Run out at Community Park. Starts at ten AM on December third. Bring an unwrapped toy for your admission fee. And on December eighth, at seven PM, we have our normal annual Christmas parade downtown. So it'd be nice to get past all of the, the COVID activities and get back to some normalcy for the holiday season. I also will mention again that we have our Veterans Day Festival scheduled later this month on the eleventh. That begins at five-thirty in the evening, runs until eight-thirty when we have a very nice fireworks display out at Community Park. We're going to have food. A band will be playing as well. It'll be a really nice event. So if you're a veteran or a veterans' family or if you want to support the veterans, please do come out and do that here in Smithfield Friday on the eleventh, starting at five-thirty. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. We do need to go into closed session. I have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, Section A, five and six. Councilman Raven?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right. I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll go into closed session. It's time. Thank you.